Hello, 9:30. Police rise for the pledge of allegiance in the silence.
.......................................................................................... So roll call, please.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Reston.
Present.
Chairman Bonick.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sosillo.
Here.
Commissioner Aguirre.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. So then we have approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes 7-0.
I couldn't hear who seconded that.
Commissioner Aguirre.
Oh, sorry.
All right. All right, that brings us to public comment. Seeing none, and we'll move on to the purpose of the meeting.
I'm sorry. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for giving us a beautiful Tuesday morning to be here. To review this, I'd like to start off with some positive news. I don't know if you saw the Record Ego article on Friday about ARPA funding. And we are, as far as I can tell, and I had a meeting with the Northern Michigan Ministers yesterday, the only county that has used this process to go get input from the public. So if you saw the Record Ego on Sunday, they had a nice editorial complimenting us for doing that. So it's nice to know. But I participated in a meeting yesterday, and really, at least in Northern Michigan, has really done anything in terms of asking for input, getting feedback, getting proposals. Some are getting them just because people are sending them in, but in terms of formal process, I think quite a few counties are going to copy the method we did. I explained what we did, and they liked it, and we're probably doing the same process, at least to get the thing started. Some people are saying they're waiting for the final rules, but I don't think the final rules are going to change much from what is in the draft rules. I can't imagine any major significant changes. There is a movement by some people, they ask the federal government to allow counties to use the money to lower taxes, but that's not been approved. There's a lawsuit there, but according to the rules now, you cannot use it to lower people's taxes, you cannot use it for any pension, death, retirement either. And that's been firm all the way through. We'll have Matt go first, because Matt has another meeting. He's actually working with some companies this morning about broadband, internet options and so forth. But I've asked Matt to come and see where I went with soil testing. Remember, Matt came last week and gave us an update.
Yeah, so I've reached out to a couple of different firms about doing the engineering study for the soil here at the Government Center. I did have one vendor that denied us. They said that they were too busy, and that's understandable. I have another reputable vendor that I'm still waiting for a quote to come back on, but I have received one so far, Traverse City Firm, soils instructors. They asked the right questions, knew what kind of foundation would be needed for the tower that we have identified, and catered the soil study to the foundations that would be used. So they would be boring a total of 130 feet of soil to be tested. And it should be stated that when we forecasted the engineering, this oil study to be completed around $2,000, $2,500, that's just the engineering study. It wasn't boiling or boring the soil. So we weren't exactly accurate with that. But this proposal came back under $7,000. I expect the next one to be a little higher than that. But we should be still standing in good footing in order to move forward and save money on the foundation design with this engineering study.
So you're thinking under $8,000?
Yeah, I know that we can do it for under $8,000. The vendor that's going to come back with another proposal, that's going to be the ballpark. They could be a little higher, a little lower, but I would feel comfortable with what we have so far. I'd like to see the specifications in that next proposal, but I think that they hit all the right points in this one.
Matt, walk us through the process from start to finish, and what the objective is.
Okay, with the engineering study, what they're going to do is they're going to bring out equipment to bore down. This one is doing it in a triangular fashion, it's going to make three bores, because the foundation that this tower probably will have will be on concrete cylinder pole masses down in the soil. So they're going to bore right where the foundation will be. So they'll be taking 130 feet worth of soil. Doing the engineering study, and when they come back with the results, they're going to make recommendations for what the foundation should be, what the depth should go to. Whether it should be, what kind of concrete it should be for structural integrity, they'll even make recommendations for groundwater and drainage. Some of the area over there is for overflow, so there is culverts. We shouldn't impact them too much, but they're going to make recommendations on how to keep the soil intact for that.
Do you anticipate any change necessary for water flow or drainage?
I don't think that we're going to see anything major. What they may do is, in the area where the culvert is going, is that they're going to have some fill going there with some rocks to keep erosion at bay, and it may just modify how the water is pouring to that area. But I don't believe that we will see anything negative from it. I have never seen standing water in that area over there as it is.
What contaminants are they going to be looking for?
Yeah, with the soil, they're going to be looking for the surface and subsurface conditions that would be affecting the overall foundation and the structure on top of it. So I don't know exactly what, you know, would be good soil and what would be bad, but with the study that they come back, they're going to make recommendations in order to make the foundation as secure as possible.
Once we get the information on the soil, and we work through a plan that will work to hold that structure, what's our next steps?
When we get the engineering back, we're going to submit an addendum for the RFP so that all of the vendors have that information to work with, so they can cater their foundation designs in order to be accurate for what we need. We expect the engineering study to come back four to six weeks, so we would be able to, in that addendum, either modify and bring up the deadline for the proposals to be due, and therefore give you more time in order to, well, I shouldn't say more time, you'd be able to make a decision a little quicker that way.
So if everything goes well in the next four to six weeks, when do we actually start the process of modifying what we need done over there to our end result of a new tower?
The vendor that would get the award for the work would be doing all of the excavating, they'd be responsible for all of it. They may actually subcontract it out to local vendors, but they will be responsible for doing the site work, pouring the foundation, doing the backfill, and what's necessary for erosion control, water management, and whatnot. So that will all be part of the project. When the work starts, right now, we have a deadline of March 1st for the proposals. It probably won't be until April-ish before they can start work in order to work around the frost laws on the roadways, because they will be bringing in heavy equipment to do this, to do this work. And fortunately or unfortunately, Government Center Drive is a county road, so it will be subject to the frost laws that the Road Commission and NDOT have in place.
So once we get beyond the frost laws, what's the timeline?
Typically, they have six to eight weeks. That's a pretty conservative timeframe for all the work and erecting the tower structure. So if they started, let's just say, worst case scenario, if they started the 1st of May, you know, by the end of July, the tower will be in place.
Any interruption in our communication services over at the Sheriff's Department?
No, not at this point. We eventually would like to put our microwaves for the 800 system onto that tower, because it will afford us better line of sight to the central tower. Eventually, the tree line will get in the way at the 180 feet level on the existing tower, but it will not interrupt for the construction of the project.
So I'm assuming all of you wish to proceed with this, due to three options. One, wait till November 9th or 16th, which would kind of slow down the process a bit. Two, have a special meeting at some point, you want to give a bid. Or three, by your budget rules, I actually could authorize this, it says under unique circumstances and situation, I can spend money. And if you're set, I would recommend that you allow me with the consultants of our chairman to agree with these bids, assuming it's less than $8,000, so we can go forward, that we do not have to have a special meeting in November 16th.
You know what? We do need to get this done before the frost comes in, so I think that's a good idea.
Yes, I mean, I think that we need to move forward.
So Matt would get the final bid. I would be told will, and if our chairman agrees, I would just authorize it so we can start the process.
And then you bring it for the next meeting, and we will discuss it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not sure you want a special meeting, general approval.
You have a consensus.
Yeah, 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 this is a committee call.
Yes, okay.
And then we will give you an update after November 9th meeting.
Are there any objections? We don't see any objections.
Okay, so I'll work with Matt and our chairman to proceed, and hopefully, even maybe this week.
Yeah, I expect that we're going to see this second bid come in. Like I said, I'm pretty comfortable with what we have. I'd like to see what kind of specifications they have included in this second vote, but worst case scenario, I think that we are sitting good with what we have right here.
And the funds are going to come from?
We can decide that on November 9th at the meeting. We can take from this fund or the tower funds.
Yeah.
But we can decide, you can decide that later.
I'm thinking they'll come from the ARPA.
Yeah, it's up to you. Obviously, it'll be a legitimate expense.
Well, I just wanted to have that open discussion.
Yes. Okay, so Matt and I will proceed with the chairman, and we'll put on the November 9th agenda to give you an update inside where the funds come from.
Excellent. Thank you.
And Matt, what are you doing this morning, as we speak?
Well, we are going to be walking around with Agri Valley. They're bringing their engineers to look at the shelters that we have at our county towers to make sure that they can fit all their equipment in. I suspect that at least on tower site, they're going to have to bring in their own shelter. And it is what it is. They can handle that, it won't interrupt their implementation too badly, so we'll see how it goes.
Matt, question along that line, because I had a short discussion with someone basically on, I think what you're calling shelter is what they have their equipment in at the base of the towers?
Yes.
Okay, so they're little outbuildings, or whatever you want to call them. So depending on the number of vendors, we've had a number of outbuildings. One of the reasons we did my own towers to control buildings on our campus. So rather than have a whole lot of buildings, is it possible to build our own building and have that building divided off into the vendors, highly secure and, you know, make sure that they have their own privacy, things can't be crossed over or anything like that, but have it divided in such a way that we have perhaps just one building instead of a whole lot of little buildings on campus? And then, I don't know if that's even possible.
I would like to say that it is. I can reach out to, because what we're going to run into is the cellular carriers. AT&amp;T and Verizon, they typically don't play well together. Kind of like fiber distribution. They don't want to rely on someone else's fiber to provide their service. Being a singular building with secured divisions inside.
That would be what I was looking for.
It makes sense, but I don't know. They could very well say, hey, great idea, we're going to do our own thing.
And Matt, maybe we should just propose that and let them object to it.
We can do that.
Yeah, say we're going to do one building with some, and see what they say.
Yeah.
What you will, Tony, they'll have generators, they're going to have their own fuel, so they're hooking in tanks, or natural gas, or whatever.
Yeah, the pigs or the natural gas hookups, that will still be out there. We would have natural gas, they would make their own decision, sometimes they just prefer to be on their own, but I, you know, it is, I can't make that decision for them.
But it's worth looking out for.
It is, it is, yeah. I'll pursue that. I like it. Thank you for that.
Well, and if they do natural gas, you'd have to set it up for multiple meters.
Yes, and that is part of the RFP, that is part of it, to where they have their own space for a meter hooked up, where they can tirade in right there and go from there, natural gas and electric.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll keep you all updated. Hopefully, we'll have this resolved by Friday.
Yeah.
Next, I've asked Darcy to just talk about revenue loss. So if you look at, if you have a book, turn the tab forward to very end, but under the category of how we can allocate the money, there's one, we haven't talked about it, it's pretty complex, I don't want to wait to this meeting. But if you look at the last page, it says page eight, and item six, it's a revenue replacement. In the provision, there's a clause that units of government can use this money for loss of revenue, if we incurred loss of revenue. So simple logic says, when you lose your revenue, you have more expenditures than you have revenue coming in, right? That's how you, now, it's not the case with this money. It actually is a formula that you use. So technically, most counties, and I think we too, will qualify as lost revenue, which means we could use some of this money to classify it as a loss. We may, no, it's up to you to use it, to use for other projects that may not be ARPA-related. But Darcy will explain this, because she's actually done the math, and it's quite complex, I understand. Lost revenue in this term does not mean negative revenue coming in. So you want to explain this, Darcy, the best you can, within an hour and a half?
Yeah, actually, the ARPA allows local governments to use, well, to assume that all of your revenue loss is related to the pandemic. Whether it is or not, doesn't matter. It's based on a formula that calculates counterfactual revenue. So what it's looking at is your trend, counterfactual. Yes, it's looking at your trend over the three years prior to the pandemic, so '17, '18, and '19, and looking at your growth rate. Taking your average growth rate and projecting what your 2020 revenue might have been or could have been. Our growth rate average was 4.9. Based on the formula, our revenue reduction per the calculation was 1.5 million. Our actual revenue compared to 2019, 2020's revenue compared to 2019, was only short about $150,000. So that's substantially different.
Would you repeat that last two sentences?
Yes, the counterfactual calculation that says this is what our revenue could have been if there wouldn't have been a pandemic, gives us a $1.5 million revenue reduction. Our 2019 revenue compared to our 2020 revenue is a difference of about $150,000.
Okay, so the assumption being that it could have been higher.
It could have been, yes. So the steps that you'd look at are, you're looking at your general revenues collected in the full year prior to the pandemic. You estimate the counterfactual revenue, then you identify the actual revenue that you collected, and that number is the difference.
Interesting.
Yeah. Your general revenues are your taxes, your charges for services, your licenses and permits, money from the state and grants, and then other local findings. The things that can't be included are like the federal funds, fund transfers, miscellaneous reimbursements. So what you're saying is, the $1.5 million could possibly be spent on something like pension reduction? No, that pension reduction is actually excluded. It's not an allowable expense. But it could be used. But I thought this was outside the parameters of the rules. To an extent. It's supposed to, the purpose of it was to allow the lost revenue expenditures category, it's to allow you to continue programs that you might have to have made cuts for, you know, different units that might have had a budgetary issue because of the pandemic.
However, there is some dialogue, once again, this clarification, that you could take the, in theory, lost revenue, and Darcy says 1.5. You can use it for general fund expenses. So I just made this up. For example, if we wanted to use the lost revenue here, we could take that money, let's say we want to apply fixing the HVA system, because that's a project we've been working on for a long time. It's not a new project.
Correct.
So we could, in theory, use that. So most units of government in Northern Michigan are going to have lost revenue. And this is a complex concept for people to understand, because we're all used to looking at revenue versus expenditures, and we're saying, well, no, we don't have lost revenue here, because virtually all counties are suspicious of that. But if you're going to explore that, you as a board do have an option to allocate up to the 1 point, that's a guess, that's a guess.
1.5, yes. And this is supposed to be recalculated every year until 2023.
Yeah, the risk is, you recalculate, you have to be careful, because it could be less, it could be more, but in theory, you could take that money, let's say it's 1.5 million. We could take that 1.5 and apply it to our general fund projects.
The interesting thing about that, or the thing, maybe one of the reasons I could break that is, because if we were to use that and recalculate and find out we're a couple hundred thousand dollars, whatever, the HVA system is something we're going to have, it's something we have to do, and it's something we would have, even if we had to end up paying some of the difference in the future, whereas if we put it towards something else that's just going to be gone, and we would end up paying for that in here.
The challenge, we have to recalculate this every year through 2024, right?
2023.
Yeah, yeah, so there's some times involved. You're right, you're saying big leery about spending on grantee projects, because if you recalculate, you could end up having to pay some, or you overspent your allocation. So that's the challenge, but if you use that expense, I'm guessing some of your allocation might be to that anyway. So that's another piece of the puzzle. But actually, if you take 1.5 or a portion of that lower amount of general fund projects, so it's a tough situation.
Definitely.
Darcy?
Yes.
Maybe I'm the only one at this table, but that sounds like a lot of money. Would you walk through the calculation a little bit? Because we, obviously, $1.5 million is a big hunk of our 14 million.
Correct. What I started with was the county's F65, which is your audit numbers. I looked at '17, '18, '19, and plugged those numbers into a wonderful spreadsheet that Hankler provided. The things that don't count, like I said, are things like federal grants, refunds, reimbursements, fund transfers. But it's looking at the entire revenue as a whole, throughout the whole county. Taking that, comparing it year to year, coming up with an average trend, a growth rate, and then applying that to 2020, what should have been or could have been your revenues had that growth rate continued.
Now, that 1.5 is not per year.
No.
That's the total amount, period. So to break that, with the number of years, that in theory, the numbers do work.
So are you, Matt, over a four-year, five-year period?
Through, yeah, we go through 2023, so really, we look at, break it out over a number of years, percentage-wise, from our budget of 14 million, it's just, the numbers do work.
It's considered 300,000 a year, basically.
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, 300,000 a year.
Yeah, like I said, your actual revenue loss.
That's a lot, thanks. That's, yeah, that's a lot better.
Your actual revenue loss from '19 to '20 was 143,000.
Okay. That makes more sense to me, because I think I would.
But the total amount is about 1.5.
Yeah.
So if you look at the big picture.
And the big picture, remember, is what could have been.
Right.
It's not what would have been necessarily, what could have been.
Well, it could be more.
Just like the 4.2 is through December of 2024, actually, December of 2026 is coming.
Yeah, we're into the what ifs.
Yeah, so it's a lot of what ifs here coming up.
Marcy, if I heard you right then, when you mentioned 150,000 figure, that was the difference between '19 and '20?
Yes.
What was the difference between '18 and '19, just those two years? I would have to look, I couldn't look at that, and then '17 to '18, just to look at what the growth rate really was, or wasn't, because I think our budgets have been pretty, they don't flux that much over time.
And actually, your trend had been up?
The minimum growth rate, they're saying, was 4.2?
4.1 was the minimum, our average growth rate was.
So they're assuming everybody grew 4.1 at least.
Between what period and what period?
Year to year.
Every year, but we haven't.
We did, the growth rate of 4.9 was from 2017 through 2019.
Over the span of years.
Yeah, they took that growth rate and applied it to '20 for what should have or could have been our revenues for 2020.
They're also, if you look at the formula, they're assuming that our expenditures will also rise by that same amount, which they haven't. That's where the funds come in. Just because our revenue should be 4.9, we'd not spend 4.9 more in expenditures, but they are making assumptions, if you do the math, that your expenditures are going to grow by at least 4.1% every year, which is not the not case.
Nope, there's no better guess.
Yeah, what was our growth rate for 2020?
Actually, 2020, we were down. That's the year we were down about 143,000.
So that's, I mean, that's a great example.
Right.
By the formula, they assumed we were going to go up by 4.1, at least 4.1%. We actually went down, so that creates obviously a gap there. But for this purposes, we could claim a loss of revenue, even though at the end of the year in our audits, we're in the black.
Yeah.
But typically, by this point, we could still be a revenue loss, and we could apply.
And, but the loss, what makes sense is that it was year of the pandemic which did cause the loss. And going forward, we may have a loss in 2021, and potentially, 2022, a slight loss. But before, it doesn't really apply, it's like doubling what we really did loops. We lost 143, but this would give us 300,000, which.
Now, you don't have to allocate any money to revenue loss, that's up to all of you. That's just another option, it's on the table for you. That is kind of complicated, that's why I asked Darcy to come and give us an overview.
I guess you had some positive, okay, this is a good way to go.
If we get some matching dollars, would this count for?
Probably not for a revenue loss, I can't imagine.
That's another consideration.
Yeah, I can't imagine they would, I mean, you never know, but that certainly would be counter, I think, what they're trying to do. The state, at some point, hopefully, will make a.
The state, at some point, hopefully, will make a decision, if you read Matt, there's some movement coming up here, to match the counties' dollar for dollar. There's enough money in the state, from the federal funds, that still has not been accounted, to match every county in the state, dollar for dollar, which, what, from what they were allocated. So our 4.2, obviously, would be 8.4, if they do that. There's talk about restricting it only to broadband and internet, but until they make a decision, we're just gathering.
Well, I think he just answered it. Do we have any sense of when that might?
The money sitting there, it's not part of the next year's state, well, this, the state budget starts October 1st. It's not part of their budget anywhere. It's in a reserve fund. They, all parties have to agree to how they allocate the money. They wanted a way to get the budget done, which they did. The state budget starts October 1st. So now, this money's sitting there, it's federal money, the state has the money, it's just how are they going to allocate it, and when? I think they'll do it before, before the end of this calendar year. But it's, could be anyone's guess. It seems like there's consensus to use it as matching funds. Let the counties and units of government decide how they're going to spend the money and just match it.
So here's a question I have in regards to that. If we go ahead and allocate funding for broadband, let's say, and we spend existing funding that we already received, and the state comes down with this match, with restrictions for broadband, but we've already spent the money, so do we lose?
Uh, depends what the final passage is.
Right.
There's some talk about make it retroactive to the day the counties receive the money.
Our state budget, come the day-
Yeah. So let's say, we got, I just, it was June, let's say June 1st.
Right, okay.
And let's say they approve matching December 1st.
Okay, but we don't know that for sure.
Oh, no, no, that's, that's the dilemma.
That's the caveat.
No one, no, they couldn't make it retroactive, like with the CARES package, they made it, everything retroactive to January 2020.
Yeah, but that was the federal allocation.
Well, this is all kind of funds that the state controls, so-
Right.
They could do it, I mean, they could make it. Logic is, and they're getting pressure to, if you're going to do it, make it retroactive to the days the units of government got the money, it just makes sense.
That's, to me, about, we can't tell them that today, that's the problem.
But when you talk about making sense, you know, this revenue loss doesn't make much sense either, so that's why it's a unique set of circumstances.
But I, I don't, I don't, I mean, this is my thought, is that they're waiting to see what's going to happen with the infrastructure bill and the 3.5 million bill.
That's another part of the puzzle.
And I, so until that's settled, I don't think the state will decide.
Because there is potential federal, additional federal money for broadband internet support on top of this money.
Well, I mean, you know, the governor has stated that, you know, she wants to fix the roads. And if they don't get the infrastructure bill through, the nine, the $1 trillion bill, then I think that money's might go towards the road. And we won't see it as revenue. If, you know, and if the 3.5 doesn't go through, then again, they're going to, might allocate it to some of those, the social things.
And that's why road commissions were not included in this last round, I mean, on purpose, thinking as a part of the federal infrastructure. It's a lot of pieces of it.
Right, I know, but that's, I mean, we may not see any of that money, you know, depending on what happens at the federal level.
And the state amount that is still unencumbered, it's federal fund, is, I think, 5.8 billion? These numbers after a while, it just gets overwhelming.
Right.
If they were to fund every county at the same level, it only would equate to 3.7 billion, I don't, those numbers after a while get confusing, but they have more than enough money to match every county, still have money left over. So it's a matter of how they're going to allocate it and when. So that piece of the puzzle, you just have to wait.
Right. I, I think we're going to not find out about that until after the federal government decides what they're doing.
Prob, probably, probably. On the flip side, there is a push, especially deal with broadband and internet.
Yeah.
A lot of units of government screaming for that. They're saying, give us an answer so we can go forward. So, you know, it can evolve, could resolve next week, it could be December. Who knows? There is no federal restrictions of how the state allocates that money.
So I'm wondering if there are any other projects that we should give a, a go-ahead to now, that for broadband, that would be weather-related, like, like the tower on this campus? Is there any, like the Maple City Tower, which is totally up in the air? But they're going to have to do soil borings and things there, too. Is there anything that we should get going now because winter will impede? What's the situation on Maple City Tower check?
Well, the bids were much greater than they anticipated, so we're going to have the dialogue, and there is some opposition from camps and township on that also. So we have to have further dialogue if you, I mean, I forgot what the bid amounts were, but it actually was a B2. Decommission that tower and build a brand new tower.
And I think the discussion is going to take place in terms of, you know, propagation of signal, going up the extra 100 feet, how much does it make a difference? To answer your question, I think we need to have the, the plan before we move forward. There's not much we can get done before the snow flies, probably, other than groups like Aqua Valley mounting their equipment, getting going. And they can, they can mount on the Maple City Tower if it goes higher. There were disruption, Matt and I talked about that, wouldn't be that great. But if it's a whole different tower, I don't know. But they could go on it for now, they can go on, only for now, they can go on the central tower for now, as soon as they can get their equipment and their tool shed and everything else they need in place. So that's why they're here today.
So I think our endless summer is about to end. It's been really nice.
Yeah.
Reality's going to strike soon. Thank you.
Any other questions for Darcy? Thank you for all your input.
Thank you.
Get to these complicated formulae.
So I just have one question. How did you find this little caveat for this, how I, revenue loss?
Oh, well, we, I mean, it's another thing we've been talking about for a long time at the state and our local administrators' council, we knew what was in there.
Oh.
It's the formula, we're waiting for the formula to come out. And actually, NACO, the Nationalization Council, was very helpful with their updates. And I've been talking with Darcy, and we've been working on it, so.
Yeah.
Darcy's been staying on top of it. We share emails back and forth when things come up that we think would be of interest. So we knew it was there, it's just a question of, okay, what does this mean, and how do they calculate? Because when they started talking about 4.2% growth in expenditures every single year, I'm looking, well, that, we're not doing that, but they said, you don't have to. Simple logic is, when you look at revenue loss, you think of you actually have less revenue than expenses coming in, but in this case, that's not the case.
It sounds like we got some benefit from our $10,000 we give to Matt.
So, and so we can just go back a moment to the HVAC system. There's been, Matt's been kind of up and down, so could you refresh the board on where we're at, is that right now?
Okay, well, as you know, John Richards came this summer one day, gave us an overview, and then we're in the process of doing that facilities, review plan, and that would be a part of it, a little bit before here. We're going to start that in the first part of the number, reviewing all our facilities and coming with a long-term blueprint of how to go forward, that would be a big part of it. So there is some flexibility, but obviously, the pot company's so big, so if you take a portion out of the revenue loss, then there's other projects, and you find it's all, it's a tough situation, and all of you know it, it's got some tough choices on it, prioritized. I thought it'd be helpful, maybe we just quickly review the requests that have come in, ask if you have any questions you can follow up on, if that makes sense.
Yeah, well, I mean, that, or I thought each person could talk about what they've thought about it, you know, give, give an idea.
Give everyone this would be the one, so.
Yeah. If they, if they're willing to, or, you know, we can just close each one at a time.
If we're going through it, I think that, you know, commissioners can comment.
All right, let, let's do it that way.
Okay. The only one that's not in your book that came in is actually from Parks and Recs, and you have a copy of it.
Right.
That came in after our deadline date, and so I made copies, you can add that to your book here.
So, so can I say that, I talked to someone on the Empire Village Council yesterday, and they didn't really understand that their ARP money might be used for the projects they asked, they requested money for. So they're going to take a look at that, because they, they mention figures for three, and there's our water and sewer, which is one of the categories. They're the only ones who specifically asked for water and sewer, and they have water and sewer issues. Things like, expensive things for a small village, but, you know, replacing well caps and that for $10,000. They're going to take a look at all of the well and sewer expenses they have, and take a look at our money to use for some of those. So we might get another, a revised request for that.
Now, all local units of government had the opportunity to apply for our funding. It was different, we did have to apply, we would see that. All villages, townships had the opportunity, some did, some chose not to apply. And I don't have a list of who applied and who did not.
But they can still do it, can't they?
I don't know, it's a whole different process.
I mean, a lot of them are sitting there saying, well, we're waiting for final guidelines.
I, I don't know, their, their process is completely different than this, so I focused on the counties.
Yeah.
I know they all were eligible. I know Matt McCullough from the North, Network's Northwest was encouraging everyone to apply, but some said, point blank, they're just not going to apply. They don't have the staff, don't have expertise, don't want to waste their time, as some, some were responses were, and some, some did apply and some did not. I don't know who did or who not.
The Solen also had the water system in there, too.
So it's hard to say. But I, I don't know when their deadline was, or is. I think it passed. I'm almost sure it passed, though.
Huh. Boy, that would be a shame.
I'm 90% sure it passed, because when I met, when we met with Matt two months ago, he was making his final calls, reminding them that the deadline's coming up, to apply.
Boy, that would be-
But I know the Township Association and other, I mean, they were sending out those emails, reminding everyone, I mean, everyone should have known about it. I mean, if they passed, they either did by choice, or someone just wasn't reading their correspondences. I want to say the deadline was September, I could be wrong, but there was a deadline date.
Yeah, and then they extended it for a short time, but I can't remember what it was, but I'm, I think that's passed, too.
Yeah, yeah. At least when I talked to Matt last time, about 70% of the people applied, units of government, in Northern Michigan, but I don't have a breakdown. Let me see, let me see if I can get a breakdown here, I don't know which ones did or did not. I'm sure you probably have, or one of the staff people have that.
Yeah, network staff, they do, they have it.
Yeah, yeah. Let me see if I can get that for you.
Well, you can go back here, how did you have them connect their North Blast networks, or North Blast, say, they can.
They did.
Probably would be a good place, they probably had marks.
Oh, yeah, and they were willing to help, units of government, through the process.
Yeah.
So I, I just don't know about Empire.
So his Solen asked for the funds, and they can use part of those for their sewer issues, water issues?
Yes.
Yes, but I don't think it's near enough.
Right.
You know, for what they need.
Yeah.
So you want to just briefly go over each one, see if any questions? Okay. So in your book-
Before we, before we do that, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about broadband, and we've talked about towers. We now have talked about the revenue loss. But it seems to me it'd be helpful, before we look at each of the proposals, is to have some general discussion on maybe the proportion of money that might go to broadband and towers, the proportion that might go, the Housing Action Committee put forward a request for a significant amount of money. Do we want to allocate into categories, and then look at individual requests? I, I, I think there are a lot of expectations that we're going to solve a lot of problems that we're not going to be able to solve. But, but certainly, we want to make sure we give priority to certain categories. And I just wonder if it'd be helpful for each of us to talk about our biases relative to that, just so we know where we all are.
I was actually thinking that'd be the next step after, and I was thinking about reviewing these in great detail, just a general overview, so you at least have, if you have any questions, and I can follow up.
But, it's okay, I mean- Yeah, let's do it first, and then we can do that. I mean, I, I know he's right, and that's what I wanted to do, too, so.
I don't know, I hope we're in agreement that what we won't fund is, is actual salaries or positions. I don't know if that's even allowed, but that was at least one request, so we don't want to create positions that they won't be funding for in future years.
I think that's what our resolution basically skipped, and we did the resolution about this, I mean, for, for salaries and other things like that.
Okay.
I think it was too serious to know that. I think we'll get this, okay, I think we'll, yeah.
You want to start with Maple Valley?
Okay.
Or Maple, Cedar?
You want to just, okay, I'll just be quickly. And what I did is, I tried to put these in alphabet order here.
Oh.
So there's different dates, but I took all of them and tried to put them in categories, so by, just certainly by alphabet, so first one's from Cedar, Maple City Lions Club for building upgrades and approximately $100,000. The next one, well, any questions? I'll, I'll kind of keep going unless someone has a question, okay?
Okay, yeah, okay, just look through them. Okay, good. All right, over.
Okay.
So that's basically the, just the building upgrades on the first one.
Yeah.
Do you have a list with each one, with the dollar amount?
Yes, well, it's in the book.
The, the not with dollars.
I did.
He did cheat sheet.
I did a cheat sheet for myself.
Yeah, I did, too, yeah.
But, and the second request, it really does not have a dollar amount, it's from Electric, basically, supporting broadband. As, as I read it, there's no dollar amount that basically encourage us to do broadband. There was a third one, is Cherry Capital Connections, basically for broadband, the request is for $2 million. Child and Family Services to support Safe Haven, their pilot program.
We can't turn the pages that fast.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Just look at the front sheet here, that's what he's going on.
I'm making nonsense, I go off.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'll just slow that a little bit.
All right.
Okay, Child and Family Services on page 14 and 15, for a Safe Haven program. After that was Empire Village, basically for infrastructure projects, and they listed some different options there that you all can look at and, and see what their proposals are. Glen Lake Association, basically for helping with their cost of their boat washing station and septic system study. Habitat for Humanity, page 21, for housing projects, affordable housing. Leonel's Children's Center, page 2227, is an infant toddler program study. Leonel Custer Neighbors for food assistance for about 180,000, and housing costs for about 105,000. The Dempsey-Leonel District Health Department is for their infrastructure needs.
Did they get money?
I don't know. They got from the last round, I don't know about this act.
I-
They got CARES money, but that was last year for different projects. Did they get anything under this one? I don't know.
I don't think so. I don't think so either.
And, you know, we should be asking that question for each one of these requests, if they have received money elsewhere, you know, are they receiving funds from somebody else?
Or could we fund them already?
Okay, next one is Lift, the Leonel Investment Teams for their programming expenses and expansion, that's on 3157. Leonel Homestretch is kind of, almost the same request, that's from Leonel Housing Action Committee, and it's for 1.05 million dollars to deal with the affordable housing. affordable housing situation. The Sheriff's Department for his vote for $490,000.
On the sheriff one, didn't we really take care of that budget?
Well, you said you'd match it, any donations. This was a request to use ARP funds.
Yeah.
So he definitely requested, so that's why it's in the book.
Then did we even find out if that voting qualifies?
That's debatable. So if you are serious about that, then we'd have to check further.
See, I thought we had a budget.
Well, you may, but he submitted a request last night.
Yeah, I don't see how that qualifies.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Leonel Metta Health Liaison for $130,000. Leonel Housing Action Committee, which I think is kind of the same with Homestretch, for $1.05 billion.
What page are you on now?
I'm on page 49 to 51.
Holy crap, I'm on 36.
Well, like I said, I'm just giving a general overview.
Okay, I'm caught up now.
Okay. Leonel Maintenance Department, Jerry can come get a list of projects. I'm not sure all those will be eligible, but everyone has a right to put in projects. I said I would accept any and all requests. Leonel Youth League, page 5657, it's $23,000. And they have a list of things they're open to buy with that upgrades. Meals on Wheels, expand their program for $448,000. Power Books Bags, on page 6264, is $208,000. Sol Township actually has two proposals in. Proposal one would do a study for $36,000. And proposal two was for their park project, anywhere from $600 to $950,000.
So the water system, they're asking 36 for that?
That's for studies, I understand.
Yeah, for water sewer.
Yeah.
65.
And the second was for the park project, anywhere from $600 to $950,000. The Southern Bay Bingham District Library for home delivery of their books and their equipment for $10,000. And there was a request for an individual that we look at the Alice data and allocate some funding there. The only one that's not in the book is the one that I just passed out from Parks and Parks.
Well, then, and the towers.
And the towers is something that's not in, we don't propose a lot. That's something we're all looking at. So there was no proposal for towers, you're right, but that's something. So that's just a brief overview about the request. I assume you all had a chance to look at it, so I didn't go into detail. If you have any questions or follow up.
No, and I think we could look at the HVAC system in it as well.
As well as we look at the revenue loss, yes.
Exactly.
But that's more of an internal request than a board.
Correct, but just so we don't forget.
Once again, I think you all know, we have through December 31st of 2024 to allocate the money, but actually have through December 31st of 2026, January 17th. So in theory, you could enter into agreement on the proposal December 2024 and have your work done 2026.
So we're not in a hurry? What's that?
We're not in a hurry.
No.
On the other hand, I don't think we should, people need, these services are important, so it's nice we have time.
What that gets considered is we have half the money.
Yeah.
So we have 2.1. The other half will come next year. So if you spend beyond 2.1, we'll be now next summer, you have to use general form hours.
Commissioner Stolz.
Well, you know, looking at the listing and reading through the rules, it's pretty narrowed down as to what would be covered in a number of the projects, although very good projects don't fall within this at all. So it would be perhaps useful at some point to identify those and set those aside as good projects for other sources of funds, or we could recommend funding from different sources.
We're assuming the final deadlines will be out this month, by the end of October. So look at the last half, that is the time of deadline. So when we do our reports, every county has to be following under one of these categories and some categories. So this really, I think, is the key document, this revenue report, because everything has to go under one of these categories. So it's nice to have all 200 pages of rules, but it really has to fit in one of these categories. And this may change. I don't know well, but it may change.
So when I looked at this and looked at the different projects, I tried to look at which fell in the category, which clearly housing does, broadband does, you know, impact to individuals does, water sewer does, and which, which had the greatest, would impact the greatest number of people with expenditure of these funds. And that's just the way I approach it.
The difference from the CARES Act money that we see last year, the CARES Act money, I actually had a local, local by Latin, Lansing, but a contact that I could call, someone responsible for this region, and I could call Bill up and say, do you think this will qualify? And then I would call up and email him, and he would respond yes or no, so we knew in advance. That's not the case this time. We will submit a report how we allocate the money. They will review it. They can come back and audit us and say, okay, we're interested in Section 4, Article 3. Show us how this qualifies for the money. So there's no one that we can call in advance to get official approval. We could, between Mac and they, go to work with us, but they will not give us final authorization. That's something you as a board are going to have to take on responsibility.
There are, however, groups who are doing that for counties. It costs money. So you, as the, our administrator, do you guys need that support?
I guess depending on how you allocate the money. Some stuff is pretty wacky. When we think about 4.2 is not the law of money.
No, it's not.
At this time, I don't feel we need to hire consultants, you know, for certain. Being leery about these, all these seminars and workshops that companies are offering, I lie about, they're willing to help you. A lot of our business sales job, they're trying to convince you that, work with us, we'll take your very big money. Some counties, I think that may be an option, but at this point, I don't see us allocating money for consultants to help us through this process.
Okay, as long as you guys can handle, I mean, logistically, with your time.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I guess, I think even you two of us probably has an idea of how we want to allocate it. I mean, my basic philosophy, and I had talked with Commissioners Stolz a little earlier, is that, to me, this is, this isn't really our money. This is our great grandchildren's money. You know, because they're the ones going to end up paying this back from the, in the federal debt. So I, so things that I look at, I feel need to be concrete, lasting, not something that we pay out now and it's done within three or four or five years, and it's gone. So I guess I'm looking at more infrastructure, you know, and things that'll last in the county. But that's why I like the towers, they say they're 50 years. I mean, that's, that's the type of thing that I'm really looking at and thinking that that's the way we should try to look at this. And of course, they have to meet those categories. So, I mean, even the HVAC system is really probably a 30-year system. So if we did do that, that would be, you know, towards being a little lenient in my philosophy. Go ahead.
I agree. I think the bulk of the money should, needs to go to broadband, because that's such a dire need for so many people, and it will cost so much money, more than we have, but it would get us, get us going. And that is something that is complicated and is going to unfold as well. I mean, there are programs coming online, and I imagine we will need every single bit of help that's out there for that. In terms of long-lasting impact and something that will benefit the citizens of this county, I'd also like to support, give it, give a significant enough chunk of money for housing so that the organizations who, that are working on that have something to work with and build on, because it is our children and grandchildren who will be needing that housing. So I think that's a significant, we can make a dent there while still giving the bulk of the money for broadband, and our people need that so badly.
I was just going to say that, for me, when I look at the general cost of government costs here in the building, what our citizens are already paying for in their taxes, if we can somehow utilize these funds to offset that cost to the taxpayers, like the HVAC system, for example, if we're going to have to pay for that at some point, if we can use these dollars to offset future costs or future costs for citizens in the county, that helps Then they wouldn't be required to pay for that over time. So I'm looking at those kind of things for myself, you know, so that we can help everybody as a whole.
Commissioner. Yeah, I'd want to, before we use it for the HVAC, I'd want to get an answer to our question about matching dollars, because we want to leverage this money as well as we can. And that would be significant if we, if we couldn't match it. But I looked through all of the applications, and my priority would be broadband. And I put down just ballpark figure, $3 million. I put down housing, and I'm more interested in rental housing than, than John's project out here. And I put $900,000, and I put unmet needs for $300,000. I think there are some people in our county that have been hit, some business owners, small business owners, and $300,000 isn't much, but I think we must try to either work with Leonel Christian Neighbors or, or the Lift people or somebody and try to make a dent on that. But the bulk for me was broadband, then housing, then unmet needs. I would favor HVAC if we didn't lose our match.
What I'm looking for is something that is going to impact the greatest number of people in our county, especially our taxpayers, and, and those who live in this county and made it through this, these last few years, and who are going to be here and make it through the next year, hopefully. I think broadband and towers are just two big, and the HVAC system in this county, if we can make that work. And any, any matching dollars, I agree with 100% to try to do these two things. We are, some of the, some things in here, we're already doing and we're already working on. And, and I don't want to get into the details of why I would support a couple of things mentioned, but we're already doing them, and sometimes they're not even fully, fully used. So, yes, housing goes, we can, we can throw all this money into housing and still only help six families or, or without. So I don't think that that's good. To use these dollars would serve the greatest portion of our, of our county. I think we're doing some great things with housing already through, through John and, and actually made great strides, even what we're doing to make this city. So it starts housing goes, you know, those, we're doing a good job with those, but it comes down to qualifications, and the greatest number of people lost in all this are those who don't qualify. They're not seniors, they're not qualifying for the unmet needs. They're not homeless or looking for homes, or maybe not a homeowner, I should say. So they don't qualify for that. But yet, they're here, they're paying taxes, and they're, they've been struggling. Yeah, they've been impacted by this. So if we can do something like the broadband, the tower, HVAC, that, like I said, we're going to have to do that anyway in the future, I see that as doing the biggest amount for, for our citizens. It's going to hit the most people, and that's what I'm looking to do.
Can I just add, you know, LCN has an unmet needs, too, that's not just receivers. So they could, they could...
But there's a qualification. You kind of, maybe you missed some of what I'm saying. So there's, there's a select group in there that, that is never, their needs are never met because, for whatever reasons.
Yeah, I've worked that desk for several months. The basic qualification is that you had none. You were up against a wall. I'm just saying that opens up, that extent is that.
Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I agree with quite a few of you here. I think broadband is, I go back to February, that was one of our goals. The only concern I have with broadband is today's technology. I just hope, you know, what we pick, I mean, I want to move forward with it, but I hope we pick something that's good down the road, it's just not short-term. On ties, on business, I agree with them, but the problem I see with the businesses is, by the time we allocate this money, are they even going to be in business? I mean, you probably need it now. That's a concern of mine.
What businesses?
What's that?
What business?
I mentioned about $300,000 for, for businesses, you know, to support them, maybe.
Oh, I thought it was just...
It's like we're losing businesses every day. So, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but, you know, two or three years from now, you know, are they still going to be around? They need to help now. Go ahead.
I would like a clarification on that, because I understood it to be unmet needs.
What's that?
For businesses, is that what you were...
Well, I'm talking about the service workers and the very small business people that lost business.
Okay, well, you didn't say that. That's why I was...
Through unmet needs. I mean, I think we have a couple of proposals here.
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay. I think we need to really look at the, the system here in this building. That should be a priority. Another concern of mine is, too, is, you know, right now, we're only dealing with half the money. What happens here in another year or two, they could say they pull that rest of that money. We don't know. So right now, we don't have $4 million to work with. We're working with $2 million. So we got to be careful that we pick the right things.
Go ahead.
And I kind of summarized a little bit earlier, but, but basically, I would agree, broadband would be obviously the highest priority for me, followed by housing. And I think the housing difference is not what the land bank is doing, which is wonderful, but, but something for a long time, it's obviously been needed to bring in private contractors and incentives and things that will get rental properties in this area, because there's no question our work shortage is related to the fact that people can't live here. And I think Commissioner Lotner was talking very, very effectively about what we'd call the Alice Group, the working poor, people who don't qualify for relief because they make too much money, but they don't make much money for a living wage, and they always do get shorted. So whether we call that unmet needs or whatever, that definitely is a priority in my book. The HVAC system, we need it. I don't know if that works at all. It sounds a little bit iffy, but I think if concentrating on broadband, on housing, and, and on unmet needs for, for certain populations that don't get benefits from other sources would be really where I would come in. come into, that I think would serve the greatest population of people in our county.
You haven't gone yet, right?
Oh, right, did you wanna say something?
Oh, I'm diglected to say, there's a little bit of money here for water and sewer projects that I think are important and I think we need to include those because that is a category and it's not a lot of money, so.
Yeah, no, I guess I went down through the list and I selected amounts for the project that I thought would fit the categories, you know, and I'll just go through it and obviously some of my ideas have already changed just from this conversation, but I started with, you know, the Lions Club and I thought that, when you look at all the things that they do, it affects the most people in the county and it can be for the longest lasting. So I put 100,000 there for Cherry Land, well, basically Cherry Land Capital, Cherry Capital Connection and for the Towers, I each put 500,000 or 1.5 million towards basically broadband, is the way I saw that. The Empire Village, I put 82,000 for them, the Glen Lake Association, you know, I thought the lake, keeping the lakes clean and helping them with what they're doing and I don't even know if it qualifies, but I put the 50,000 down for them. Then the Leonhard Children's Center, Leonhard Christians, I saw that mostly as daycare providers, helping the daycare providers so that they can get set up to provide daycare, for home daycare is what I was thinking, provide 50,000 for that. The Health Department, I mean, they're gonna need a new building, they really, that's what it comes down to, Montessori is gonna kick them out of there eventually and that's their problem and I'd really like to look at putting them in the basement. I know if we have to move the storage, you know, we may have to clean out the other end and everything that's available in the basement, we maybe have to put up a new building, but to move the Health Department into there, into the lower level would really, I think, be beneficial forever for the county, for as long as it's there. So I put 300,000 to try to get that at least accomplished, to see if that would work. Otherwise, we're just gonna have to put them up a new building somewhere and I don't know that there's a place on this campus that we can't. You know, then I went down and I looked at the housing action and I thought if we could set up a revolving loan fund and we'd have to put them out, I put 250,000, but maybe we should do more than that, but I thought that's something that would go on and perpetuate itself and if there's interest on it, it actually would grow and grow, you know, and continue to help people in many, many different ways. The Youth League, I put 10,000 there, then Soul and Township, I put 50,000, I thought they'd get their study in and they can get them towards getting a sewer system because I really think the sewer and water there are very serious health problems. So I came through with about, actually about 2.4 million, spending what we have without going too far into anything else. I thought really the HBA system, I knew that might come up, but that's something that this county should have to pay for itself as we do it and really, I think the system we have right now fixes it. I mean, if you take 3 million dollars overall, you're gonna get more than 80,000 every year in, and so we can just keep replacing those furnaces with better ones as we go along. And I think we just keep doing it. But anyway, that's sort of how I looked at it, you know, and maybe some of those don't qualify and maybe there's others that we really should look at instead, but I just, it gives us an idea of how we allocate this money, the 2.1 million, and work towards those goals. I mean, that's how, when I spend time on it, that's what I looked at.
Well, the only other thing, I didn't check because it wasn't in my book, but the other thing, if we are going to go outside of the, probably what I consider the big tier or three that I've heard, or two, I guess maybe, might add the two we've heard the most of, if we take HVAC out, we've had towers and broadband. If we are going to split this up into smaller portions or get to more entities, I think we should consider the, especially one or the other, but for sure this loop trail that the Parks and Recreation would like to do, the one mile paved loop around that park over there, because of the costs, the costs are probably at least a couple hundred thousand dollars, 200,000 dollars would probably go aways. But in your reason, I throw that in there because it is something the counties should pay for, but we've never had the money and the chances of this county ever just gifting our Parks and Rec the 200,000 to build that loop trail is pretty slim. So, but that is something that if they chose to use it, it would definitely benefit everybody in the county because it's looking at the disabled, wheelchairs would be able to use it, those scooters or whatever, but young moms or dads with strollers could use that one mile loop for, you know, the health, it's a health issue. It's been requested and then, of course, there's been a high amount of interest in the dog park and I don't think the county has, I think we may have one dog park in the county, I'm trying to remember where I heard.
We have one in Northport.
Is that it? So...
Yeah, a dog parade.
Yeah. So, anyway, I'm just gonna throw that out there, I think, Will, you did a good job of choosing some numbers and projects too, I don't really, can't say I totally disagree, right off the shoot.
You know, when I first read this, I thought, oh, wouldn't it be wonderful to give money to the Lions, give the money to the library, help the Little League and then I thought, we should just allocate 300,000 for all these wonderful local projects and then I thought, wait, there's no category this fit in. I don't think there's a category, I just, you know, I agree, the Lions do so much and I'd love them to have a new kitchen, but I don't think it fits. And I don't understand how parks fit into a category either. Is there a, because that's a wonderful project too, but how does that fit into water, sewer, broadband?
I figured under health, but, you know, maybe there's another, maybe there's another category.
And if we get matching funds, this whole picture will change.
Right.
Ms. Laughton?
I like, I like when we talk about broadband slash towers because I do believe that towers are at least a short-term solution, but I have in Leonhard Township, 1,100, I think, residences that do not have cell or broadband. We're going to be, if we allocate to broadband and towers, that is also going to address some unmet needs because to connect them is gonna cost money and we can afford that, but some of our Alice families can't. So I applaud, and Will, I like your list and I'm reminded that you just budgeted for half of it.
Right, that was the idea because that's all we have.
But if you fund Melinda's Lions Club, then I'm gonna get a Northport Lions Club proposal in there.
You missed the deadline.
Yes, sir.
I liked your list too, Will, I thought you did a very thoughtful job of going through it and keeping up to what we have has some merits. I just wanted to comment on the broadband. As we're looking at this, we have an opportunity with putting together a plan to really, we now know what we have and what we don't have and we know the speeds of what we have and from all the work that Lift's done over the years, we know, we have a lot of information on our providers and we know the new providers that are wanting to come in. So I think we're looking at the capability, everybody wants fiber, which is, you know, obviously the thing that's coming in and is probably going to be the most permanent, but the cells, cellular towers, they'll come up fast so people can have high-speed broadband service quickly, like first of the year in the spring when snow melts and less Agro Valley is successful and getting a lot of their equipment on and tested this fall. But Ty is right, that's in most cases will be short-term mobile, some people may find it perfectly adequate to fit their needs, but in looking at it in two prongs, fiber versus the towers, because what the towers also come to cell companies and we have lousy cellular service in a lot of sections of this county and now cell companies are offering home-based programs, internet programs, which use the same technology as cell spots, but it's different, it uses a modem and it's cheaper and people who live near one of our towers where we have AT&amp;T that doesn't, that does have this, T-Mobile has it, they're not on our towers yet, but there are others and also Verizon is not in this game yet, but I suspect they will be, but there are numbers that people can check to see, you know, do I, can I get this service? So it's something immediately that people can do for broadband in the short term while we work with the whole idea of fiber, which is very, very expensive. It's like 45,000, you know, a mile. So these monies won't go far in that, but providing incentives and matching dollars with other grants that might be coming down the way, you know, there's a lot we can do with planning and I think we can come back to this group, you know, with a plan that's, you know, going to be workable, that will involve some of the providers that have already submitted plans, but not probably in the way they're looking at it, I would imagine. I think to do it quickly, we have to look at all providers and how we can work together. So, and also, you know, cooperatives, which is, I'm very glad Mr. Laughton agreed to participate in this because she brings information that a group doesn't have. So I just wanted to kind of emphasize that, that we're, I know there's a proposal in here, there are other proposals that probably come in, albeit late, but putting together a plan and doing something logically that's going to address having everybody have it as quickly as possible and long-lasting, going the fiber route and see how we can make that happen. There's a lot of fiber in this county already, it's just how to tie it together and how to get people to work together.
If I may ask, Patricia, is it Starlink, how does that play across this county?
Starlink has opened up their beta sites along the western side of our county. There are some companies that are looking at time, they have to have fiber a little bit to their own, they put up, they're not very tall, they're maybe seven feet.
Like a substation of sorts.
They're a substation of sorts with different pods that they use, but right now, people who have Starlink love it and there is, again, the website you can go on and check to see, gotta have a good northern exposure, location exposure and it's a little pricey upfront, but it's probably cheaper than a lot of the other broadband options.
Right, so with that said, how do we incorporate that in this broadband project?
It is one of, that's what I meant when I said we have to look at all the providers and what they're going to do, so, yeah, not just that.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Ty, I think one of his concerns for Northport, because I think that's one of our worst areas, the Northport area, is the inability for that northern exposure because of the tree, or tree competition.
Right, so, yeah, fiber is probably the better method for that way, but also companies like Agro Valley, they're fixed wireless, but they're not your normal fixed wireless. They really are, they're lower in the frequency, they're licensed and their equipment is amazing, so they'll be able to reach some areas in Olympia and Northport.
So a question to what you're saying, so there are people down at Empire who could access Starlink. Is it available to all those folks?
No, no, what you have to do, they have so many beta slots in certain areas, they just have to go online and that...
If you Google Starlink, you get them?
Well, I'll send you the PowerPoint that I put together.
Okay.
That has all of the, in fact, I can make it visible to everybody, it has all of the links that you need for any of these services. So just go online and just put in your address and they'll let you know whether or not, and they'll also walk you through how to determine whether or not you are eligible, but I'll tell you, T-Mobile is in that area too.
Eric's gone. Can't we, has this, have all those things been like in the enterprise?
No, I talked with a reporter and I provided all of this to them, I think they're kind of doing stories a little over time, but we wronged, just set up a broadband initiative on our county website and that information is going there. The study is there now, but also we'll have all of the links and everything and it's right under, it's not buried under other services. What it is, is when you click on government, you know, you see departments, you see townships, the last link after other is broadband initiative. So, and there will also be an email address there, so if people have specific questions and, you know, Ty and some other folks that are involved with Lift are monitoring that and making sure it gets to the right person to answer, you know, we don't want to answer right off. So we just need, there's so much, so many questions on this, we just had to find a way to start answering all this question without them.
Ms. Laughton?
Well, in the loss area for as far as internet goes is my area. Look, now we are five, six miles west of Traverse City and our only option is, right presently has been Cherry Capital Connection, that's where they kindly came into our area. We didn't have, not believe it would want, we didn't have DSL, AT&amp;T doesn't have DSL in that area, has no interest in putting it in. There was no satellite, couldn't get satellite and there was nobody else and lately the cellular service has been horrible. Not only have I seen it for myself, but I've heard it from a number of people and you'll watch, if you watch social media posts, you'll see it, people in, you know, our county are really unhappy and they're naming the providers and they're, it's been bad and I don't know why. But yeah, so we're fiber, there's no fiber, there's no other organizations, so it's kinda odd, you know, Northport kinda makes sense, you're at the clear out at the tip of nowhere, but when you look at five, six miles west of Traverse City and you can't get service, it's kinda crazy.
And I think yours, your township has the least amount of broadband capability of any of them.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, so will Agro Valley help?
Yeah, Soul and, they'll be on the Maple City Tower and that will help. Won't reach everybody, but it'll help some.
Really need, we need to lay fiber down, so we have township, that's what we need.
Let me summarize some of the just next steps, because I think, it seems like all of you are prepared with broadband, towers, shared energy, the high priority. I think all of you are saying you wanna wait to see what the state does with matching funds. I think you're all waiting, we need to have a federal guidelines finalized. The revenue loss is a new concept that you just talked about for the first time this year. I like what Will did, just come up with priorities, maybe what you do is, I'm hoping there'll be some more information by the end of this month, so maybe what you do is, if all of you can do what Will did, come up with your priorities, submit, I can all put together in one package. I'm hoping by the end of this month, there'll be some more specific guidelines, maybe you can have a special meeting at the end of the executive meeting on November 9th and if you all could take your time between now and then, do exactly what Will did and you can email me, you can put out a piece of paper, whatever you want, we'll put all that into one document, because I think there's a lot of consensus here on that. And so you can do that, hopefully we'll have more clarification, you may have some information about the matching funds, maybe, and I'm not sure if we need another special meeting for November 9th, I'm just hoping, but hopefully by November 9th, then maybe some more clarification since you're all gonna be here on the night, maybe we can hold a special meeting at the end of executive meeting.
Do we have to have a special meeting, can we have an executive meeting?
Well, you do, sometimes you skip it.
Yeah, or give a test, I mean, I don't know that it makes any difference.
Yeah, it makes a difference, it gives you more flexibility that way.
Yeah, I would like to have a, be able to have a conversation like we have had today outside of the executive.
Yeah, I was gonna say, right at the end of the executive, for real sake, but I think you have more free-flowing ideas and that, well, this I mean, it's more of a dialogue between all of you. a dialogue between all of you, versus the formal, so that's why I think just, I think it.
Are there items in this that we really can't really supply through the R?
Probably.
I mean, should we really?
We goes out?
Yeah, we goes out, so we're not deciding to spend money on, we know.
Or at least they're not qualified at this time, or for your knowledge.
And the other issue I raised was, you know, like, you put in Empire, why, like, are they getting funds from someplace else? Are they eligible to get?
Let me see my list of what units of government receive water in our county.
Right, okay. That would help me, because I don't want to throw money at a township or something where they have access to their own.
So, I think if all of you come up with a list of your prior spending, and then on the 9th, we can decide if they're eligible or not, if there's support, I mean, some of them might be support, there might not be support for it all, and then we develop, do you want to fight the man, do a presentation, what kind of criteria, you know, one of them is, are they getting money from somewhere else, hopefully, the other end is all, but November 9th, could just have a more in-depth dialogue on that, you see?
I have another question, if I may. You had mentioned something about Housing Action Committee with a revolving fund.
Yes.
And I would kind of know, I would like to know what the metrics of something like that program would look like, you know, who's going to be responsible for this? Is this going to follow on Trudy, you know what I'm saying? How do we, how does this get implemented? So, we have that.
Commissioner West. And when we do our assignment for check, can we do two years, or can we do the full 4.2, but take it in two stages? Sure, so that we have a vision for the total, but know that we got to do it in two stages, because we can only do half of it first year.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Also, do you have questions you want answered? Let me know too.
Yeah.
And I think it would be, one more thing, and I think, Deborah, it's a good question, and we did have a Housing Action Committee discussion of that, and Trudy was a part of that, so maybe when we come to that, Trudy could join in.
I think one thing that we have to remember is, we're looking at a long span of time currently, really. It's short in some senses, but it's really a long span, and we don't know what changes are going to happen, we have a lot of changes going on in our country today, so, you know, we're talking inflation, we're talking recessions, we're talking all this kind of stuff, which may change the whole picture of, you know, how we allocate the dollars, or even if we do get the dollars. So, I just wanted to bring that to the forefront.
Commissioner.
I'd like to clarify too, that 10,000 that Glen Lake asked for, for their septic study, that is, again, to further people's knowledge and awareness, since we don't have septic ordinances, it's just giving people more information so they can ensure, giving people in the Health Department and the associations more information, so they understand if they're, if a person will know if their septic system maybe needs to be checked, or upgraded, or whatever. So, it's just, it's, as Trish Dutton said, it's, not that she's involved with that, because I don't think she is, it's education. And to educate people, you need more data, and we have an opportunity to get a little more data, because we have more advanced methods available to us, so.
Right, and I, you know, like that, I was thinking we'd go into the Health Department, so that this is a permanent record, not just the study that goes to the Glen Lake Association, but goes to the Health Department, so they have that information for years to come, and you can look at what's going on.
And, yes, and I think it's been done in China.
Well, we just need to keep reminding people, because a lot of people don't understand that they can go to the Health Department today and ask for a study on their system. The Health Department can tell them what information they've got on their Health Department, what information the Health Department has on their home, where the septic is, when was it put in, where the well is, what, and they can have it inspected, and they would know. So, not only that, on top of that, they can always get their pumper to inspect their system, the system itself.
So, I think part of this though, is like with the no QPCR technology and that kind of stuff, it gives us more data, and how do we use it? You know, you've got to be able to test it out.
It's a start, they would know right away whether they need to go further.
So, everyone's going to try to just use their priorities to chat.
Any good questions, or any further follow-up, you can leave, tell us what you need. All right, listen, you can email them, or you can just write a piece of paper right down with priorities, we'll do that, and go from there, and so, everyone's agreement November 9th, to November 11th. I think this format gives more dialogue, more free-form ideas.
Yeah, thank you.
Any public comment? Any commissioner comment?
This was helpful.
All right, I'm seeing no commissioner comment, I'll say we're right.